Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, June 23rd, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties, where the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Call the meeting to order. All selectmen are present, including the newly re-elected Ms. Brascio and the newly elected Ms. Malinowski. Welcome both of you. Congratulations to both of you and your recent wins. Look forward to a successful year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I get to our first agenda item, I want to note the news story that we all awoke to early this morning and that played out overnight last evening at our Public Safety Complex. As noted, this matter is under investigation, and I don't have any information to share beyond the press releases that have been issued. But I would like to echo the sentiment that Chief Paulus offered this morning and commend the officers involved in the incident, the rescue personnel that assisted the injured officer, and also the Westboro Police Department for their support. While an emotional and traumatic experience for those that witnessed and were involved in the incident, the reality is this could have had a much worse ending in so many ways, and for that, I'm grateful. I've let Chief Paulus know that he and his department have my support in this matter. I trust that of the full board as well, and we offer our best wishes to Sergeant Toluca and his recovery. So I just wanted to make note of that, that story that we all woke to this morning. First item on our agenda, reorganization of the board. There are there, so with a newly constituted board, I think it's appropriate to, for us to select a new chair, and I'm just curious if there are members who are interested in being chair for this upcoming year or if there are members that would like to nominate others for the role of chair for the board.
I've got a comment, I guess.
Go ahead, Sam.
I think, A, I'm not particularly interested in being chair. But second, I think historically, there is some precedent for the vice chair becoming chair, and there's also precedent for different structures out there. And, you know, I have great respect for our vice chairman. I guess my personal choice is, I think, given the times, Lisa would be my choice for chair. I don't know if she's interested in taking that on or not, but I think, again, given her experience in the chair's role and her connection with the community, I think this is a great time to reinforce that we are eager for community input and have great focus on soliciting opinions from the public, particularly from folks who feel like they've not been listened to historically, and I think she's a great person to do that. So that's my personal preference, and I guess my thought is that regardless of tradition in terms of ways this has been done, I think that it's incumbent on us to pick the best person for the job for the particular time, regardless of who has been, hasn't been, is or isn't interested, et cetera, et cetera. So she's my personal choice. I don't know how others feel about that. I don't know if Lisa is willing to throw her hat in the ring on that one, but I defer to her on that one, so.
If I may, Brian?
Yep, go ahead, Lisa.
So, Sam, thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your vote of support. I just think, for me, for this year, we've started a process, and I would like to follow through on that process. I will say that I do have an interest in continuing to serve the town as chair potentially down the road. So I think I could still be of real service to the taxpayers and, you know, to the board in maybe a secondary role. But thank you. I greatly appreciate your kind words and your support of me, Sam.
My pleasure.
So if he would accept my nomination, I would nominate Mr. Healy to serve as chair for the upcoming year. I think, Marty, I think you do an absolutely tremendous job at it, and hope that you would be receptive to that and hope that you would be open to taking on the position for this upcoming year.
I'd second that nomination, although I got a question for Mr. Healy, so if you would accept that.
The quick answer, Brian, is thank you and thank you, Sam, and I would be happy to do it if at least three of the people feel that that's appropriate. But what's your question, Sam? Maybe this'll, maybe this'll change my answer.
You should have asked that before you accepted.
Yeah. I still have the mute button control, Sam. Be careful here. What you said, go ahead.
The omnipotent mute button. I guess, Marty, I'm actually interested in any thoughts you might have about what you would like to accomplish as chair over the next year. I think there are a lot of possibilities out there that are important for us to address, and I'd be interested in your at least high-level thoughts on what you think we might be able to target in terms of initiatives, follow-through, et cetera, issues that we should be dealing with and so forth. If you have any thoughts you could share on that.
Sure. I guess, short term, is emerging from this whole COVID thing. With as, you know, we've got a solid foundation going into it. I think Brian has been an incredible steward as chair of the Board of Selectmen to get us from the end of February until now. You know, having sat in on a couple of just agenda-setting meetings with him and Mark, it is sort of remarkable to me, the amount of additional work that the chair is responsible for. Obviously, the second thing that is going on in the country right now, it's both, I guess, a short, medium, and long-term issue is to make sure that, as members of the Board of Selectmen, as representatives of the Town of Southborough, that we make sure we're doing everything to support the inclusivity that there's obviously a strong yearning for. You know, I was touched by the, I watched a video of the vigil, vigil last week. I wasn't able to be there, and the sentiments expressed there. So I think that's, that's not a one-year project, but it's certainly a project over the next year. In some process things, I mean, I think we've done a lot the year I've been on and the year you've been on in terms of making sure that the Board of Selectmen is accessible and, and open and listening generally on all sorts of issues, and I'd like to, I have some thoughts about, in fact, maybe I'll even bring one of them up later on tonight, in terms of doing even more to enhance, you know, public participation in our processes and processes generally. And then, and this is related to COVID, but not really. It's a, it's a longer-term thing, and that is, you know, Southborough's an interesting place. I mean, I remember when my wife and I decided to live here, we were kind of taken aback by what a unique location it had, you know, with the intersection of three major routes, and somehow had maintained this incredible, you know, rural, quiet atmosphere. And on the one hand, that's incredibly important. The other thing that's important, though, is to, the stuff that's going on generally in terms of our villages, in terms of downtown. You know, one of my favorite things to talk about is the Main Street Project. I think that's a nice springboard for some incredibly positive things that can be done for the town. So I guess, I didn't expect the question, but that's kind of off the top of my head. Those are the sort of things, the ideas that kind of percolate in my head, you know, right now, and I suspect there's lots of other stuff in there, given a few more minutes to think about it.
Thanks. That's very helpful. Appreciate that. And again, I share your interest in those issues. I think the challenge for all of us is to how to make some of those things that seem like major problems, issues, opportunities, translate into things we can actually do short-term. I attended the vigil recently as well. I was trying to think of how we translate some of those ideas into things that can make a difference in Southborough. And I'm having a hard time coming up with specific things, but I think we need to keep those kinds of things in mind and work on that consistently over the next year, years here. So it'd be great if we can find some ways to make those things happen near term. Thank you.
So there's a motion made and seconded for Mr. Healy as chair. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Healy as chair, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Now I gotta go through the whole alphabetical thing. Where does Malinowski, Mr. Healy?
I will abstain from the vote.
Okay. Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Shea is aye as well. Marty, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I can recall the days when there was a great contest among the selectmen to see who didn't have to be chair. When I first moved, I watched some of those dances where people were, well, I'm willing to do it one more year, but never again. Maybe we'll get, who knows?
We'll see. How long is the term?
Twelve years, I think. You should have asked that before.
I know, lots of questions I should have asked first, but anyway, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right, so I have to do something now, right?
It's, you're driving the bus now, man.
Did you remember to bring your agenda with you?
So I will, I will make a motion that Ms. Brascio be vice chair.
Second.
Hopefully, Ms. Brascio, that is acceptable.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, jeez, that's right. See, how quickly they forget? All right, there's a, there's a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, the only discussion I will stick in is I think that Lisa does a fabulous job in pretty much any task that she undertakes, so I'm, I am incredibly supportive of her being the vice chair. So now I have to go in alphabetical order. Ms. Brascio?
Stane.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Lisa, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right. I guess now we are shifting gears to our substantive agenda. And Ms. Galligan on cue has popped up. Item 3A, and it'll be sub-A and sub-B, Karen Galligan, DPA, DPW Superintendent. And Karen, the way the agenda plays out is the first thing that we've got for you to talk about is FY 2021 Transfer Station Rules and Regulations. Is that what you want to talk about first?
Sure. That's, that's an easy one. Well, it depends. It's an easy one.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Um, so I think it got a little confusing. The way we used to have these, when we read, when I put them together this year, we put them into a Word document. It had been in an Excel document. So the track changes are actually like a whole different document, a little wonky. So if you just look at the one that says draft, that's the clean copy of what, what I wanted, you know, we wanted to get voted. That's, that's a clean copy of the rules and regs. There's not a lot of changes. It's more formatting and moving things to try to make it a little, I guess, easier to read. The Public Works Planning Board, they've voted to not change the rates. It just doesn't seem like a good year for that. Anyway, we are still talking. I think the town was still talking about maybe putting it back into the, into the tax rate. So for now, obviously, we can't do that this year. We'll just sell them at the $250 that it was last year. Same thing, the second, the second, and any subsequent ones actually were free. Seniors are still free. Nothing has really changed on them. The one thing I was looking to do, and I forgot to ask Public Works Planning Board, you guys can decide to or not. It really is sort of an irrelevant thing, but when you get a second, like, if you don't return your permit, like, if you, if your, if your car broke down or whatever, you buy a new car, you don't return it, we charge $10. There's really no reason for that. It's just with something, because people seem to be switching them around a lot at one point. And honestly, it's just, we don't have cash down there. It's, it's just, it's more of a, people kind of get mad about it. The seniors, like, we didn't have to pay for it the first time. Why are we paying for it now? So I, we were looking to get rid of it. If the board wants to, that's great. If they don't want to, because Public Works Planning Board hadn't voted on it, that's fine. We just leave it in. It's, it's not a significant income maker or anything, obviously. So it's, it shouldn't be a big problem. I, I do know that Mrs. Malinowski was looking at, we, we didn't put our phone number under the obtaining transfer station stickers permits section. We, you know, if you have questions, call. So we probably would want to add that as long as everybody wants that. Otherwise, I don't really have anything significant on here.
Marty, can I make a comment?
Yep, absolutely.
I'm a member of the Public Works Planning Board also. We discussed it. I guess I was holding out for, including the $10 replacement fee. Those stickers actually do cost us some money physically to do, and it seems to me that at least recovering our cost for those plus keeping a incentive for people to be a little more careful with the stickers maybe is not a bad idea. I think I would have been outvoted on that by the Public Works Planning Board, but at least that was my view, that we ought to keep it as it was last year.
How many were there last year, Karen? How many situations like that?
Um, I actually, it's, the, the database we had was kind of hard to find it. We were at maybe about 30 that we actually collected on, put that way. There were some that we didn't have changed, and we had to make the people walk away.
Okay. What with Sam, while you're, you've got the floor, anything else on the, the proposed rules and regs?
Nope. Again, I think sort of steady as you go is not a bad idea for this time. I think there are some other things that we need to think about longer term, in terms of a policy for how we deal with the tax base versus sticker fee thing. I'd observe, some of you are aware that Advisory Committee, that, excuse me, the Capital Planning Committee is working with John Butler to take a, an overall look. Karen has been working with John to take a sort of high-level view of transfer station operation in terms of what makes sense longer term. So I think that's going to shed some interesting light in terms of data for a decision going forward for next year. So I think more to come on that, and it seems to me that same as last year is not a bad decision at this point.
Marty, if I may?
Yep, sure. Lisa, go ahead.
So I, I'm going to play Dan tonight, and I'm going to agree with Mr. Stivers.
Oh, no.
Also, there was, Karen, there was just one comment I had on page three, where it shows what the fine is of the $250. There used to be a box around that, so it was clearly visible what it is. The way it is listed on the draft that I have, it's very nondescript. And if we could just somehow stand that out, so people know that there is a $250 fine. Again, because it was, was that on a prior copy? I just would hate for somebody to dispute the fine, and, well, I didn't see it, and it wasn't big enough, and yeah, so in fairness.
Makes sense.
Okay, that's it for me, Mr. Haley. Thank you.
Mr. Healy, I have a few comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Chelsea.
So Karen, right above where Lisa was just pointing out, participates, missing the I.
Oh.
And sorry, I didn't catch that last week. And I just wanted to talk about the costs for the $3,400 related to mailings for this information. Can you walk through what the $3,400 includes?
Um, yes. So we, we buy the stickers, and then we, sorry, that's actually in the sticker fee, different. So we buy, we basically buy, buy somebody to do all that printing and mailing. They, they stuff the envelope, they print everything, and then our, our postage is in there, which is about $1,500 for the postage. So that's what that $3,400 is. It's that mailing that goes out so that everyone remembers to get the transfer station stickers on July 1 or after July 1, but before September 15.
So is there any regulation that requires that we send all that information out? And it goes to every resident, every resident right now?
Correct. And no, there's no, there's, there's no regulation that has, that says we have to do that.
So I would, I would like to look at another option rather than spending that money on sending this information out, like maybe a postcard that says, "For this, for the transfer station information, please go to this website and look at it." I just think with the financial situation that we find ourselves in, it makes sense to look at reducing costs where we can. I don't know if anybody else has any other thoughts.
Well, can I ask a question? So Karen, is, is there, this typically goes out in its own mailing? That's bad of me, because that tells you that I don't open it, so.
I don't think a lot of people do, right?
To Chelsea's point. So is there a reason that we couldn't do a postcard, as Chelsea said, or even include it with the tax bills? I mean, we're already paying for postage. And I get the cost. We're still, we're still having a cost associated with it, and I understand exactly where you're going, Chelsea. Do you have any suggestions based on that, Karen, as to what might, off the top of your head, if you're not on the spot?
Um, it would not, that, we, we could do a postcard. I don't, I don't see that as being a problem. I think one of the things is that the seniors have, you know, there's like a mail-in form, and we try to encourage them, and this year, I think especially, because the way our place is set up, you can really only have one person at a counter at a time, because we don't have a way to keep six feet. So people are going to be outside buying through a window. And then some people, one person at a time can come inside. So I think what's gonna, we're going to encourage people to, to mail in, and seniors, I mean, at least there's no fees, so they don't end up paying the credit card fee or anything. But they are the ones who will call us and say, hey, I never got a mailing. I didn't know. I was supposed to get a sticker. Where's my mailing? I need the piece of paper. But if we do print some, put them at the senior center, I do think people are going to be able to visit there, I think, soon, right? We're in that phase two, two now? So maybe we can. But either way, we can definitely send, send a postcard that says, go to the website, go to the senior center, or you can pick them up. I mean, we, easy enough to do, I, that, that we can do. And I don't know, the postage would be a little bit cheaper, or we, like you said, we can slide it into the, we can slide it into the tax and water bill that goes out this quarter.
How many do we send, like $3,500 or so roughly?
Yes.
How much would it cost to send a postcard? Probably $50.
It's about $1,500 is the, the cost for the mailing, so it would probably be half that, because I think the postcard is, is so much cheaper, so it's probably, you know, maybe in the order of $800.
Karen, is it, if, if the, if, if the, at least one of the issues is the senior population, I mean, is it possible reasonably to do a hybrid approach? I mean, to, to send out the sort of mailing you're describing to the seniors so they can mail in? And they're also the, the demographic that's probably less likely to be looking for information on the website?
That just changes the, the postage, because you're, you're just sending out to all residences at this, on this route?
So you end up paying a higher rate?
Right.
Yeah.
But I do think, I mean, I do think we could, with the postcard, it would, it would catch everybody, and then they, they could, though, I mean, it's a little easier to read, right? It's a couple of words on it, and then they can go where they want for the information. And, and if we do have the information on the website, but also like at the library or at the senior center, DPW, people will find it.
Are you doing a drive-through for the seniors?
No.
Okay. So everything's going to be at the DPW office?
Yeah, or mail-in or, or online. I mean, it's, it's all available still the same way, except that drive-through.
So the previous drive-through that the town clerk had organized, none of that's going to happen this year?
Correct.
So we save about $1,700 or something like that by doing a postcard, you think, Karen? Karen, $1,700?
I'm sorry. I know, it was a statement. Yeah, I would, I would guess it must be around that. I don't, I don't know what the cost to print them would be. You know, whether we print them at our own place or whatever. I mean, it's just materials or, but yeah. I would think we could probably save $1,700, somewhere in that $1,500, $2,000 range.
Anytime we change something, we're probably going to get people who are unused to the change and say, I didn't hear about it. But on the other hand, the budget pressures, that sounds like an interesting idea.
Could probably just put a sign up too at the transfer stations to let folks know that the process is going to be a little bit different this year. If they use the transfer station, presumably they see the signs.
I'm going to think, right? Yep.
Ms. Malinowski, anything else?
I think that's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Brian?
I, no questions. I was actually leaning towards agreeing with Karen to waive the $10 fee just to save the hassle for the folks at the DPW office, but I could be, I could go either way on that. I don't want to. Hopefully, we can come to an agreement on that, but there's no other items that I had questions or comments on in the regulations.
Okay, Karen, a couple of quick things from me.
Yep.
Number one about Ms. Malinowski's point on the mailing. In terms of, I mean, it's, again, it's not a huge budget number, but I think it's reasonable, and this might be a nice springboard to the discussion and feasibility. I know it came up with discussions we had with advisory about the tax bill mailings. And take a look at exactly how much money we're spending on mailings for various things and see where there are, again, sort of embrace as much as we can the fact that we're in a digital age, and, you know, the fewer things we need to put in the mail and pay postage for, the better. So that, that's a, it's not a discussion we have to have today, but longer term, and maybe get an idea of exactly how much in any fiscal year we're spending on postage on various things, and whether there's a way to consolidate, to push people really hard to rely on the town's website rather than mailings for information about these various things. It might be, might save us some money. And then the second thing, I guess this is also a longer conversation. I mean, I looked at the numbers, and it's, I know it's, I know there's a broader conversation coming up about the transfer station for whether or not it gets wrapped into the tax rate. But it also, it struck me, looking at the numbers, that if it, it just strikes me that one or two things make the most sense. Number one is wrapping it into the tax rate, or number two, paying for it entirely and make it a, I mean, it looked, it looked like at about $300, which is $50, you know, a dollar a week additional in fee, you'd basically be covering the entire cost, and you wouldn't have a deficit from the transfer station. And it just strikes me that one of those two things, right now, we're in the middle. You know, we're, we're charging a fee, but we're not covering all the costs. It just strikes me that it makes, if we're going to charge a fee, we should cover the cost. And if we're not, then we wrap it into the tax rate. Again, not an issue for, for this. I think these rules and regs make an awful lot of sense for where we find ourselves in 2020. But, you know, to put in the back of my mind and maybe other people's minds for, for down the road. That's all I have.
Marty, if I may, I think you make a good policy point there. I think it's useful if we were able to take a position to say, going forward, we're going to continue to look at the mailing issue. Are we mailing too much? And in fact, our, we could take a position to say, we ought to work hard to look at all the things we're mailing and move over time to a much more electronic position as a matter of policy and sort of motivate departments and others to do that and inform the public that this is what we're doing and help incentivize people to take a closer look at the electronic postings of information. So it saves money, and I think we're all better off to spend. So it saves money, and I think we're all better off to spend less money on things we can do electronically, and use some of those resources to fund some of the people things that we've struggled with most recently here at the budget process. I think that's a much better position for the public.
Okay. Anything else? If not, um, is there a motion?
I guess I'll move that we, uh, approve the, uh, regulations, um, as discussed here, with a, a couple of minor edits, and, um, um, I guess the intent to use a postcard mailer for the communication of this with appropriate support through message signs, postings at senior center, and, and other places in town to alert people that the change is being made to electronic distribution of the forms for application. That, after what we talked about.
We didn't capture the ten dollars, though.
Uh, I, it, it's as in the, as in the regs.
Okay.
The ten dollars is there right now.
All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Yep. All right, seconded by Ms. Braccio. Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy, aye. All right, Karen, you've got your rules and regulations.
I'd comment that Chelsea's off to a great start if she saves seventeen hundred dollars every meeting.
We're gonna start tracking. Doing each meeting, right?
Now, next, next week, it's, uh,
Yeah, I'll keep looking.
All right, three A, sub B is, um, uh, an interesting proposal, Karen, the Mass DOT Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program. Um, uh, and obviously, we've got the, the, uh, uh, materials you submitted for that. Do you wanna add anything to it?
Um, well, I do wanna note, and I, I saw that they're, they're kind of on the Zoom meeting with us, um, that EDC did wanna look at doing some, um, some different things. They did have a lot of people come, come to me about different things. Um, readiness is a bit of an issue with this grant, that you wanna make sure you're ready, um, that we can get it bid, and get it at least started um, within the hundred days that they give us, um, and the hundred days started yesterday. Um, and then there's up to three grants that you can get per town. Um, the max is three hundred thousand, the lease is five thousand. Um, the, what we're, what the DPW is proposing is that, um, we have the downtown project that we know is coming up. That includes extension of sidewalks up and down, um, eighty-five, what I'd like, um, and, and Newton Street. Newton Street, um, is a little bit separated, and that, that's actually like about a four hundred thousand dollar project. So if we could get the grant money for that, then we would, um, actually, I mean, we'd still have to supplement some with, um, you know, allocated money, whether it's chapter ninety, or, or, um, or our own town roads, road money, but, um, we, we're pretty mu- much extended on all our road money, um, it's, and, and all our chapter ninety, it's all allocated to something at this point, so um, getting that grant to be able to do this would make this nice contiguous sidewalk that goes from the medical center, you could get all the way to Colonial Gardens on sidewalks, but you could then also get it all the way to Parkerville Road on new sidewalks, then down Parkerville on the old sidewalk to get to Neary, you can get to Fay Saint Mark's, you can get to, um, the library, Woodward. Um, so there's a lot of benefit if we could, like, that's a continuation of something that, of, of a project, and of a federally funded slash state-funded project of Main Street, um, that I think would score well, and we would be able to get that full three hundred.
All right, let me, I'm gonna ask a couple of quick questions before I open it up to, to, um, discussion. So there's some pretty hard deadlines in the, or, or, um, um, incentive deadlines in the, um, uh, uh, the state materials. Uh, so in terms of this project, if, i- the, the project you're proposing, that's something that the town would be ready to move on in the, the, the shortest timeframe, which is fifteen to thirty days?
Yes, so, um,
Okay, that's, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
You have to have a couple of public meetings, because I, I don't wanna like, just shock everybody with it. We haven't had a lot of discussion about the project yet, so we would try to do that, and now that we're in the Zoom atmosphere, it's a little different. I was kinda, you know, you kinda wanna talk to people one-on-one, but I think we're gonna go, have to go the Zoom route to do this.
Okay, um, and this would basically build on, it was before Mr. Stivers, um, Ms. Malinowski and I, I think, were on the Board of Selectmen, but I, I believe there was an initiative that was embraced to basically extend the Main Street project, which stops at Park Street, down into the, um, uh, Town Center, um, specifically, and this would, in addition to doing some other things, accomplish that as well?
So the downtown, we've already got allocated chapter ninety funding to, and as, and as part of that eighty-five, there's an extension from the Main Street project on eighty-five, and actually, in that contract, we're probably gonna bid the Deerfoot intersection, the Deerfoot, uh, um, flag intersection. And that's all been allocated chapter ninety money to those.
So this would, this would be, so this would replace that chapter ninety money, or would be in addition to that chapter ninety money?
Right, so all that work would still be under its own contract, but this would extend sidewalks now down Newton Street, so it would take the downtown project and extend itself, I'm sorry, north on Newton Street, um, and it would get us to the medical building.
All right, my final question before I open it up to, to, um, um, other folks who are, who are chomping. Um, the, it, it's five to three hundred, I guess it's two questions. It's five to three hundred thousand dollars. It's three hundred, five to three hundred thousand dollars per project, and each town is allowed up to three?
That's my understanding of it, yes. I, I mean, I don't think we would get three three hundred thousand dollar projects.
All right, and, and finally, do you have a sense for what you're proposing would cost? Presumably less than three hundred thousand dollars, but do you have a sense where it would fall?
No, I, it's actually not less, I, I, m- my last, um, budget of it was four hundred thousand.
So the town out of chapter ninety would cover a hundred?
Or, or, or out of our road maintenance money, yes.
Okay, all right, I'm all done. Sorry, sorry to hijack that. Um, Ms. Braccio?
Yes, thank you.
Questions?
I, actually, just one question, Karen. So is there any way to be able to use or apply for a grant for some of this money towards the Courterville Road project here on the south side of town from, uh, I know you guys are gonna redo the sidewalks, there's a plan for that. Is there the opportunity to potentially submit something for that?
Um, so that, that project is a little further off in, in our, in, in its readiness, and, um, we're looking really at being able to use complete streets for the sidewalks on that one, and then fund the rest, and, and that project kinda, the sidewalks have to be done in conjunction with the road, whereas Newton Street, the sidewalk and drainage basically can be done. It's, there's not a lot of road, roadwork that has to be done. It's sidewalks and drainage versus, um, Courterville, which is kinda like a whole redo.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, Mr. Shay?
All right. So Karen, from any preliminary work that you've done, have you determined if any easements are gonna be required, or can everything be done on the Newton Street part, all within the public right of way?
Right now, it looks like everything can be done within the public right of way. The, the some of the drainage improvements and everything, which currently go out over on Main Street, that, um, I'm not sure that, how that all pleased in, like that one outlet, I think we have an easement for that, but that old stuff, that's that old, it's hard to find. So we'll, we'll research that, but that shouldn't be an issue, because it's already going there.
Okay. Question, Brian?
That was it, thank you.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Stivers?
Um, Karen, um, the limit is three hundred thousand a project. Is it, does it make sense to try to break up the four hundred into two projects, two pieces, and apply under two, as two projects? Um, to me, the challenge is to find something that's gonna score well in terms of the award process, which I don't really understand. But, um, it's a shame if we could apply for, you know, three three hundred thousand dollar projects, or, or whatever. You know, you never can tell. If you don't shoot, you don't score, as they say. So if there's anything else that we could try to, uh, include here, uh, you never know what's gonna happen. Maybe there aren't a lot of people who apply, unlikely, but, uh, you just
Very unlikely, right? Um, I, I'm not sure what their cap is. I know that the buzz on it, at least, has been more so than has been on, on most of the other, you know, money that we've been able to get for things. Um, as far as DPWs go, everybody's kinda like, oh, great, look, because a lot of towns are in that same process that we're in, where we wanna start adding sidewalks. We've got complete streets, we're trying to move forward with things, and there's just, just not enough money at any of the tills. And now, all of a sudden, like COVID, you're just throwing money at everything, and it's kinda like, well, jeez, we're throwing it, let's try to catch some. Um, I it's, I don't believe, I, I kinda don't wanna compete with ourselves on two big projects, um, unless we're sure we can get one done, it, whether we could, um, I mean, we, we, we could, we could look at it, but I would like to try to get
Let me jump in here, Karen. Um, Sam, I guess my reaction to that is, it's, it's, it's clever, but I, I have a feeling that what the state would do there is realize that we've broken up one project, and instead of giving, giving us three hundred thousand, and we pick up a hundred grand, they give us two hundred thousand, and we're left holding the bag for two hundred thousand. That, that's, I, I think that's a risk.
Understand, and I appreciate that. Or maybe there, there's another project, so we do this one, is, is three hundred, and we pay a hundred, and if there's another project out there that may not, we may, don't think is gonna score as well, but, uh, is it worth putting in? So I, again, defer to Karen and others who are more technically capable of packaging the thing, but I would hate to leave something on the table with it. And final comment is that whatever we apply for, um, maybe we consider trying to get our legislators involved. Others, I'm sure, are gonna be doing the same thing to try to and reen- reinforce the value of the project for South Row, et cetera, and it doesn't hurt to have them asking questions about how that's going, I think.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Ms. Malinowski, you have unmuted.
Yes, I just have one question. Um, Karen, what would be the timeline if we were to apply for a second project?
Um, so we, I think you could, like, we could apply this week for one, and this week for the other one. There's, you could put them all at the same time. And I do think the EDC has, well, I know for a fact that EDC has interest, and actually, they're on the, they're on the wire here. But, um, in, in some stuff, the, the um, they definitely, as far as like, doing some downtown work, that, that's something I know that they were interested in. It really doesn't fit into our three hundred thousand, but that would be something that the EDC could pursue. Um, you guys would have to vote to, to support that project also, and I, I don't know if they compete, if we, you know, if we chance getting, uh, ten thousand dollars for something, and not the three hundred, but, um, on the other hand, if it's something that a lot of people wanna do, obviously, any, any anything we can do to, to, to uplift the downtown is great, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you've mentioned, uh, Lisa, you got your hand up again?
Yeah, just go ahead, Marty. You go first, that's fine.
Oh, no, no, I was gonna see, she, uh, Karen's mentioned EDC a couple of times, and, um, I was, I was gonna ask Vanessa and Katie, um, if there are EDC people up there, out there with their hands raised, if that's the, um, if that's the procedure for, uh, um, letting us know that they wanna weigh in.
Uh, nobody has their hands raised right now, um, Marty, but John Wood is in the, um, attendee waiting room, as is Marekka.
Okay, well, they
Would you like to speak to any of them?
I, I, if they're, if they wanted to weigh in, that's fine, but I think, um, I think otherwise, um, we'll go to Lisa.
Just, just a quick comment. I think, um, I know when Karen, you initially brought this forward for Newton Street, I think this ties in with EDC, and I think it ties in really well with the downtown. We're putting walkability. Um, a lot of people work at, um, South Row Medical, and it gives them the opportunity to bring them downtown, and it also, again, brings people from Colonial Gardens downtown. So I think what Karen's proposing falls right in with the EDC message of, you know, bringing people and walkability. So I, I think it's a great project, Karen. That's all, thank you.
And Karen, the final thing I'll say is, is that, um, a lot of the discussion I've heard, um, um, from and at various EDC, um, functions, um, is, uh, uh, obviously support for making the downtown area more walkable. We've also heard that, though, from the trails people, um, from the open space people, from the recreation people, in terms of, of just making, you know, uh, uh, South Row's concept of a downtown area a little bit larger, and connecting, whether it's with bikes, or walking trails, or otherwise. So I don't know if it's helpful, I suspect that it wouldn't hurt. Um, but touching base with the, the trails folks, and the open space folks, as well as EDC, and being able to put in your application materials that, that they support this for initiatives that they are pursuing as well. Uh, I just think that gives it a more, a more well-rounded, um, view, and I also think it has the virtue of being accurate, so.
Amazing.
So has, all right, Vanessa, I'm assuming that nobody from EDC has raised their hand, so, um, I'm gonna see, okay, um, is there a motion?
I guess I'll move that we, uh, support, uh, Karen's proceeding with the application for the, uh, sidewalk project, uh, as she proposes.
Second. All right, any additional discussion? All in favor of Ms. Br-
Sorry, do you, I don't know
Karen, when you're, when you're, when you're, when you're winning, you should stop talking.
Sorry, I just don't know if you have to vote for the chair to be able to sign it. I, I don't know how, if it's just support, or if the chair can sign, Mark Baby can speak to that. I, I don't know how that works.
I, I'll amend my motion to, uh, uh, proceed, uh, with the, uh, condition that Mr. Healy can sign, uh, that before
If needed. It may not be, so, all right. That didn't undercut your, uh, presentation, Karen, so. Uh, all right, Mr. Stivers is moved.
Second.
And seconded by Ms. Braccio. Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Uh, well done, Karen, and good luck with the grant.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a nice night.
You too.
All right, moving on, um, reports. Oh, that's interesting, chairs report. Uh, you know, I think in some respects, Mr. Stivers, your, uh, uh, your, your question, maybe, um, I'll, I'll frame that as my, um, report for tonight with one quick little, uh, addendum, and that is, um, following on something that Mr. Shay said at the, um, beginning about the South, South Row Police Department. Um, I, I will just note that, um, I stopped by the police department this morning, just to touch base with, uh, Chief Paulus. Um, and my timing was such that I, I walked in while he was being surrounded by, uh, media outlets from, um, Boston and, and environs, um, with cameras everywhere, and, uh, we should be proud, and South Row should be proud. Um, in, in this very isolated instance, the way the chief handled himself, um, and the way he answered questions, and the way he, he represented the South Row Police Department on behalf of the town of South Row. So, so a, a shout out to Chief Paulus. Um, I'm glad I was there and had an opportunity to see that, and it was incredibly well done. So that's my report, um, and we'll go in alphabetical order. Ms. Braccio, anything?
Uh, I could not agree with you more, Mr. Healy, and I just wanted to take a second and, and thank, uh, Selectman Shay again, for his year as chair. Um, I, I thought he brought an incredible level of, um, patience, and, um, just amazing skills to the board. And again, I just wanna thank you, Brian, and, uh, it was very appreciated, the, the year that you served as chair again. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Uh, Ms. Malinowski?
Thank you. Um, I just wanna echo the sentiments of all of you that have, um, commended our police department, and best wishes for all of them. Um, I also am looking forward to working with all of you, and have enjoyed, um, watching your meetings over the last couple of years, so, um, now I'm looking forward to being on Zoom with you.
Um, Mr. Shay? Uh, nothing from me, Marty. Mr. Stivers?
Um, I'll echo comments, appreciation for Mr. Shay's, uh, time in office here, as Mr. Healy commented, chairman of anything is a substantial job, that most of which is not very visible. Major time consumer and, uh, major stress producer in terms of, uh, handling a lot of issues that come up, so appreciate Brian's efforts and that effort at work, and best wishes for Marty and Lisa as they take that on going forward. I'm excited for the potential here. I think we can do a lot of great things this year, so I'm looking forward to it.
All right, the final thing I'm gonna say, and I was remiss in not, I was talking about Chief Paulus, who did a wonderful job, but, um, uh, best wishes to Sergeant DeLuca and, uh, uh, speedy recovery for him. Uh, next, consent agenda. Item, oh, wait a minute, we have a town administrator. Who's not Who's now feeling neglected because, because the new chair jumped over him to the consent agenda.
It's not, it's not the first time. Meeting, it happens all, you know, so, and I'm not getting a complex. It's, it's okay. I'm here to fix it, Marty. Don't worry.
All right, Mr. Mr. Purple?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just, I do want to echo the comments that the board has made regarding the incident last evening. You know, when, when, when Chief Paulus came to Southborough, one of the things he wanted to focus on with the department as a whole, but with each individual officer is development of those officers and training. And I think when you see an incident, as unfortunate as it was to unfold last night, the outcome, I think, was, you know, as positive as it was for the department overall. And because a result of the training. And, and, and that really, that really stood out. And I think that, you know, as much credit goes to the officers, it also goes to Chief Paulus for, for instilling that culture in that department. So really appreciate that. As some of you may have noticed, the flagpole in front of the townhouse looks a little funny. I do want to explain that. I've talked to some of you individually about this and, and sent out a couple of notes. Crown Castle had submitted a building permit to the building commissioner saying that they needed to structurally reinforce the pole and that we're just going to switch out some antennas. The pictures before and after that were submitted did not show any discernible changes to the pole. However, as the, as they came in and began to do the work, it became obvious that that was not in fact true. And so the building commissioner and the facilities director halted the project and, and, and basically called Crown Castle on, you know, you really didn't tell us exactly what you were going to do. And rather than letting them finish the improvements, we had them remove the equipment and go back to square one. So since then, I've had conversations and the building inspector, commissioner has had conversations with Crown Castle directly. I've been told by Crown Castle they are going to put the flagpole back to its original, its original condition. So it is going to look like a flagpole again and not, you know, something that is, is going to take on new antennas or new technology, new capabilities. That being said, the flagpole has likely, since it was installed in 1999, it probably, in its current form, is not going to, is not going to meet the needs of AT&amp;T as the technology changes. So Crown Castle is going to be submitting something to us as to whether or not they look for the lease to continue. Or, you know, that the lease, when it ends this September, October, that, that it, you know, that it may end, and we will be left with a flagpole per the lease agreement. So I wanted to let you know, kudos to the facilities director, to John Parent, and to building commissioner Lori Luvoli for, once we realized we had been sold a bill of goods, you know, put a halt to the process, dialed it back, and the conversations with Crown Castle, you know, have resulted in a, in a, hopefully, basically reversing all of this work and putting it back the way it was within the next couple of weeks. So the one other thing I do want to point out is that we talked a little bit about grants and everything. And Karen had made a comment about, with all this COVID stuff, they're throwing money at things. While I was having a conversation with Representative Dykema this afternoon about a number of issues, but she did let me know that there are some technology grants that are in the pipeline. The House has passed them and they're now in the Senate. They'll be for both town and for school. And so I told her to keep us informed as to what those may be. We have had some, some good luck with getting some technology money for our fiber project, for connecting the buildings and things of that nature. So hopefully we can benefit from that. And I, one last item, I will end on a little bit of a, a little bit of a down note. Just before we went to meeting tonight, I was informed by the public health nurse. We have had, on the, on our COVID-19 counts, we've had 41 positives. One was in, one is in isolation and 40 have been released. The, I was notified by Emily that the person in isolation has passed. So it was someone in their 60s. And at this point, that is really all the information we have. So we have our first COVID-related death in Southborough. So. But, you know, the, we have not, the other side of that is we have not had another positive case. It's been roughly 15 days or more since we've had the last positive case in Southborough. So that is what I have for you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, without knowing the identity of the, the person, that's obviously tragic news. And our thoughts and prayers go out to his or her family. That's a shame. This disease, this virus has taken a toll. All right, item five is our consent agenda. I, I expect a number of these may be held. But for items A through I, are there any that members of the board want to hold?
Marty, if I may? B and C, and just a question on H.
Okay, why don't you go with the question?
Okay, so is this putting the cart before the horse, Mr. Purple, or Chairman Healy? That we're discussing the outdoor seating policy and the approval authority, but now we're approving the alteration of premises request? Should we be doing one before the other, or is this just a process and it?
So I think it, it could be a chicken and the egg thing, Lisa. They both have to get done. The, the applications were, were done to try to expedite the manners, to try to move things along for our businesses. In a perfect world, we would have had you approve the regulations and then done the application form and everything, but we've tried to get this going so that hopefully after tonight, we could get the businesses. And in this case, New Rose Garden has decided not to apply, so it is simply Ola that is before us this evening. You know, we can get them going with their outdoor seating, so we can try and help them kickstart their business.
Okay, well, that, that being said, I have a couple of questions on the application then, so.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we kick H, 5H over to, and include it, the, the discussion of 6A, because it is only that one entity now. I think that makes sense. So without any objection, we'll do that.
Thank you.
I'd hold I. I have a question about I.
And I'd like to hold A, please.
All right, so. Anything else? Are there any that go through? All right, so we're holding A, B, C. We're kicking over H and I? Is that?
Right.
All right, so consent agenda items D, E, F, and G. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy, aye. All right, let's take them in alphabetical order. So we're at B.
I, I held A, sorry.
Oh, you had A.
Sorry, yeah, I, I'm just going to abstain, so.
Okay.
I will move item A, approve open session minutes from June 2, June 8, and June 9.
Second.
Question. Seeing none, Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Abstaining.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Ms. Braccio, I think you, you held B?
I did. I just wanted to take a second and on behalf of the board, thank Ms. Bartolini for all the time and effort she's given to the town over the many years she served and the many different capacities that she served. I did try to talk her at town meeting out of resigning. It didn't work so well. But I just, from, from the bottom of our heart, we, you know, we very rarely get a volunteer that serves as long as Kathy has served. So I just want to wish her well on her retirement, let her know that she will be missed, and the contributions she made are so appreciated. That's it.
Anyone else on Ms. Bartolini? Other than echoing Ms. Braccio's thoughts, which, which I certainly do.
Ditto.
Okay, and she'll be back. She'll be back. She said she was taking a break, not that she was retiring. She'll be back. Too, too much, too much energy and, and commitment in that woman, so. But why don't we, let's hold on B for a second, because there might be some similar sentiments. Let's go to, see, at least you held that as well.
Also, I just, I wanted to wish Ms. Remillard well, thank her for the, the time and the service that she's given to the town. And again, just thank her again on behalf of the board. That was all.
Again, hear, hear from, I think, all of us on that as well. All right, H, we kicked over, and Mr. Stivers, I believe it was you, said you had some questions on I.
Question on I. Saw the list. Just wondered, be sure that we're being as aggressive as possible in terms of looking for reimbursement. The, the number was $100,000. It's suspiciously round numbers, so you wonder, are we estimating the actual, real numbers that we can tie back to and demonstrate that we spent it? It fits the category, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, that's obviously, that's a round number like that, same as obviously an estimated number. And, you know, I don't think that we're anywhere near that number in terms of reimbursement. But we wanted to make sure that, you know, that those categories that are provided are essentially the categories that we, that we can, that we can use based on the DOR guidance. And we made sure the number had significant amount of padding in case there are things that we can put into that. And this is simply things from fiscal 20, okay? Starting July 1, that's a whole new ballgame. And so if there's anything we come up with, whether it's the DocuSign software and all of that stuff, all of that is going to be able to go in and be eligible for reimbursement.
Good. And, and again, I saw the, the original list, which I was impressed with its breadth. So it sure seemed to me that there was a lot of capacity for doing things that, you know, maybe are heightened by the need, given the COVID situation and remote meeting stuff, things like document processing electronically versus paper documents that we could work to make qualify for the reimbursement if we work at it creatively a little bit. I would urge us to be very aggressive about that and see what we can do.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the cost of the Zoom software, Sam. You know, I mean, you know, I know we all love this environment and, but this is not something I think we all would have signed up for. You know, were it not a necessity for us to continue to conduct the business of the town in a safe, safe manner.
New shirts for all Zoom participants.
So it sounds, Mr. Purple, that, that in, that your answer to Mr. Stivers' question is that we have, in terms of the, the fiscal year 20, we have been aggressive with that $100,000 number?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, Chelsea?
Mr. Purple, have we applied for all of those items through the CARES Act or through FEMA yet? Or where are we at with that process?
No, we have, we have not. The state has told us that we should wait until, you know, to, to do it closer to the end of June for the, for the state, for the federal. It wasn't like we were going to get the, if we applied now, it wasn't like we were going to get the money back from the federal before the end of the fiscal year. So it wasn't going to help us in that regard, and we weren't really running any, any deficits that couldn't be covered. So the suggestion was is to wait a little bit longer and apply, you know, you know, apply for a bigger number. And then, you know, because it's still going to probably be October by the time we see any reimbursement from it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional discussion on those items? All right, so is there a motion for items B, C, and I?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, Ms. Braccio? You're muted.
You're muted, Lisa.
That doesn't happen often. Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. All right, well, next up is pulling over the one we just kicked. Item 5H, the approval for alcohol license alteration of premises request for outdoor seating for Ola. As well as item 6A, which is the discussion of the outdoor seating policy and approval authority. And again, Mr. Purple, appreciate the materials you provided. They, they were, for the most part, pretty self-explanatory. Do you want to add anything about those? Before we move on to the discussion of the policy and with, it sounds like there might be some questions on the application.
Yeah, I'd like to start by saying I take no credit for this whatsoever. Mrs. Hale has been the one who has steered the ship with this, with Lori Esposito in our office, with Building Commissioner Lori Luvoli, Fire Chief, Police Chief, with Mareka, you know, in EDC, and, and also in building, I'm sorry, planning with Karina. She's done a very nice job of pulling this all together. So I'll let Mrs. Hale speak to, you know, the policy piece of it, and then we can jointly handle any questions you may have on the application.
So this was definitely a collaborative effort, just as Mr. Purple just indicated, with all of our code and permitting departments that, you know, would have a role in this. We've talked to a number of different communities over the last 10 days to two weeks to figure out, you know, what was working and what wasn't. You know, where their glitches were, and we're very pleased with this final document. Of course, after we spent the last two weeks on this, the governor said, you know, indoor dining, you know, is now open. But we are still really hopeful that this helps some of our local businesses get back on their feet a little bit. Because as we all know, we are, you know, unsure of, of when the next wave of COVID is. So even if it, you know, is not used emphatically right now, we certainly believe it will be during the, you know, later course of the summer and into the fall. But Ola was, has been asking for this right as soon as they could. So we're excited to help them and others get going.
All right, I guess first about the policy. Any comments or discussion? Ms. Braccio?
Just, just a comment. Again, I think this is, is long overdue. I, I completely support this process for our businesses. Anything we can do to help them. I just had a question on the application procedure. We, if the outdoor seating plan is acceptable, town departments will provide comments and the application is complete. The town administrator will approve and execute the permits. My only concern with that is, is based on the application we got, I know I have questions on it. So I would like the board to be involved in that process. And again, it's nothing against Mr. Purple, but I would think that maybe I could come up with a different question, as Chelsea or Brian could come up with a different question. So I would just like to see the board involved in that process a little. I think if a, if an application comes in, I think this board could meet relatively quickly for a brief meeting to answer any questions and, and get it done. So that's my only point. Other than that, I thought the, the policy was great. You guys did a great job in putting it together so quickly to be able to help our businesses. So I thank you for that.
Lisa, let me ask you on, on, on that. Would it, would you be comfortable with, because obviously, moving quickly is what Mr. Purple, the, the reason he did that. Would you be, would you be comfortable with something like, and obviously, Mr. Purple, would you be comfortable with when an application comes in, that it gets circulated to the board and, and almost the way we do it, a town meeting and with our consent agenda? If there's a hold, then it goes on our next agenda, but if there's not, then Mr. Purple has the authority to, to sign off on it.
I think that's more than acceptable.
I'm just, Mark can weigh in, certainly. I'm just a little concerned that that might be considered deliberation over email.
I don't think so. I don't think so. We're not, we're just, I don't, I, I am, I am comfortable that that's not deliberation?
With no explanation, just say, I, I asked.
Then I'm good, okay.
Well, and I think it should be direct mailing to Mark, not amongst ourselves.
Yeah, absolutely.
No reply, just a single reply to Mark, I think, could do it, and I think that would work.
I just have a quick question about that. Would we have to wait for our next meeting? Or would we be able to schedule a meeting, like, let's say an application came in tomorrow and we're not scheduled to meet for another two weeks? Would we be able to meet in the interim to approve something?
We would ask for a special meeting.
Okay.
Which is probably not too hard to do. My guess is there aren't that many restaurants in town, so it's not something that's going to happen every week kind of thing.
Yeah, just.
Two others or something. So.
Yeah, just to give a little context, Sam, that's probably a good idea when, when Vanessa had put this all together. And an email went out to the group afterwards as to here is the results. There were really five establishments. That were potentially in play of doing this. And then, as you saw, there were two that came forward. And then one backed out because they're going to wait and see how now that they can have people seating indoors to some extent, how that works out along with takeout. I think Vanessa's right, you know, that, okay, here we are now. We're approving the outdoor application just as the governor says, okay, you can start to move back indoors if you want to. So I really don't know how much. People are really going to take advantage of this. I really think, you know, in some cities and towns, I mean, obviously Boston is the big one. You know, when you look at the North End and, you know, my living room is bigger than most of those, rest of those restaurants. Moving outside and everything provides a great atmosphere and it, it does an awful lot. But. You know, I, I don't know that we're going to see, we're obviously not going to see that same level here. But to have the ability to do it if somebody needs it, that's great. And, and I'm fine with whatever process that you're comfortable with. Just as so long as we can maintain the expediency to help the businesses.
Completely agree, Mark.
Marty, just one last.
Yeah.
Question. And just so I'm clear, that any establishment that has a liquor license associated with it, that automatically has to come before the board for approval, right?
Yes.
But if it doesn't have an alcohol license associated with it, there's the potential that that could be. Funneled through, directly through you.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and the, 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 the sort of hybrid of that, obviously, even if you have an alcohol license, could you? Ask for outdoor seating but not have alcohol sales out there? I suppose you could. Might be kind of an odd thing to do, but.
You could, but I think that from, from a financial standpoint, you're kind of cutting your nose off if you have.
That's the moneymaker.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
I'd, I'd still like to, to be informed of anybody who doesn't have an alcohol license if they've applied for this. I guess I'm interested in knowing. What's going on out there. So Mark, if an application comes into you that doesn't technically need to go to the board, I appreciate your circulating that. So folks.
I'm fine. Well, I, I, yeah, I think the understanding is that any application that comes in, I'm going to circulate it to the board anyway. And if. If there's someone who says they'd like to see it on an agenda, then we'll schedule a special meeting. I'll work with the chair to schedule a special meeting to get that. Get that taken care of as quickly as possible.
Good.
Yeah. And I'll just add as a, as a final note that, you know, I guess if I wouldn't have had questions on the application that came in. It, it would have been a, a more of a non-issue for me, but because I did have questions. So that was why.
Okay, so let's. Are there any other discussion on, this is just having, having to do with 6A now, and then we'll get to the application itself. Any other discussion on 6A, the outdoor seating policy? All right, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the policy amended by the conversation. Here recently.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. And now for going back to consent agenda, item 5H. The. Approving, approval of the alcohol license alteration of premises request for outdoor seating by Ola. And Ms. Braccio, you said, so you had some questions about the application.
Yes, just, just two questions. One of the things, and I, and maybe I missed it in the application. I'm just curious what the lighting is going to be. In the parking lot, based on the hours that they have listed. Till 10 o'clock Monday through Thursday, 11 o'clock Saturday, Friday and Saturday and, and nine o'clock on Sunday. I just wonder if anyone knows how they plan on lighting this tent. It is somewhat in a residential neighborhood. So. I'm just curious if there's been any discussion on that.
I don't have, I don't have any details on the lighting. I've looked at, I've looked at the plans. I, you know, obviously there's got to be some lighting, Lisa, but I don't have the details on that. And I can follow up obviously with those details. I'll just make a, you know, make a note on that, that obviously before it's approved, that, that everyone understands what the lighting plan is.
Okay, so that was question one. And then I just have one other question. Has any consideration been given? I know this is through November 1st. And again, I think outdoor dining is fabulous. But has any consideration been given to Triple E? Based on where we sat last year with summer nights being canceled and, and whatnot, where we do have hours. Has the Board of Health given any thought on their? Process? I assume they've opined on this. So again, that's just.
The health agent did not have any concerns about the outdoor dining piece. He did not address Triple E. But I am going to sit in on their virtual meeting on Thursday morning. So I, I can bring up that point with the Board of Health as well.
Perfect. And that's it for me. Mr. Healy, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Malinowski?
I have two questions. Do we know if the residents were notified? By Ola or the town of outdoor dining being across the street? From them?
They were not. That during the, one of the provisions of, of what the state has allowed us to do for outdoor dining, waves the requirement. For normally when there's a liquor license hearing, we would be doing a butters notice, a legal notice, et cetera. All of that has been waived by the state of Massachusetts for this process right now. So they were not formally notified in any way.
Okay.
Although I will say that during the planning board meeting last night, they also emphasized to make it very specific. To Ola, especially because of where they're located in, in that plaza, that, you know, no parking whatsoever on the corner or on Breakneck Hill. Because of communication we've had from residents that in that neighborhood in the past.
Okay. And my second question is, as you pull into that parking lot and take a left, the, the seating will be on the right, correct? So will you be able to still take a left? And so if you're coming from the light from Route 9, you're essentially doing a 180. To go into that parking lot. Is there, what kind of barriers will exist? Outside of those tables? With cars coming in there? Do we know?
I'm not sure. Mark, do you know that?
I don't. But again, that's something that, you know, we can get that, you know, get that specific information and provide that to the board before it's approved.
Okay.
Is there a safety issue there needing Jersey barrier, for example, to separate? I mean, there's room for a car to move behind those. Parking places, but also room for a car to veer toward the tables there potentially.
Vanessa, you said the, the, the various departments, including the police department, were involved in the discussions about this?
Correct.
All right. Maybe it's as simple as just making sure that the police department is comfortable with whatever the setup is.
The layout. Yep. I'll follow up.
Thank you.
And the final thing is, I, I guess, following on Ms. Malinowski's point. It, it, it doesn't have to be a, you know, a formal letter or something like that. But I guess. Just from a comfort level, if you could set out the concerns that were raised by the planning board and that were affirmed tonight about the neighborhood. And the, the, the parking, put it, even if it's just in an email, just so there's a written communication to Ola that lays those out.
Certainly. I would envision that we have to give them something that they can post, you know, so it's publicly viewable that. We would have, you know, sort of a footnote of, you know, these are, you know, the primary issues, you know, to be cognizant of, but. It certainly would be also be included in a cover letter.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
I had a couple of comments, but they were fixed in the updated version of the application. So I'm all set.
Okay.
Right.
All right. So is there a motion to approve Ola's application as set out in the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shay. All in favor of Ms. Braccio?
Mute.
Um, aye.
Ms. Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. And I guess the, the only, the thing I will say after we've gone through this process is. As with a lot of things, I think post-COVID, that some things that we didn't do before and didn't even think about before. We, you know, light bulbs might go off in various people's heads and, you know, particularly with the, the, the work that's going to be done in the downtown area. Some restaurants there that, that I encourage the other restaurants to think about outdoor dining. I, I, again, I think, you know, obviously the world has changed a lot the last three months and. I don't think outdoor dining in downtown South Rose, I, I see those people in front of Moro's Cafe and they seem like they're, they're having a grand old time. So. That's just my one comment on all that. All right. Move on to item 7A. And I, it sounds like the representatives from the EDC have been quite patient listening to us. And. Are they still there, Vanessa?
They are. And Ms. Reynolds has her hand up. Do you want to take that communication now or do you prefer to wait?
Well. I will hold on. I, I'd like to hear it's, it's their proposal. Before we engage in any discussion to see if they have anything to add to what they.
Actually, Mr. Wood also, I didn't realize until just a second ago, Mr. Wood also has his hand up from the EDC.
All right. Now everybody's about to see just how bad I am with technology. I just have to hit the hand, I think, to start off.
Just want to give permission to talk, allowed to talk? Or we can do that on our end?
I, I can't. I just get the hands.
Okay. Katie, can you give Mr. Wood permission to talk? Or bring him over as a panelist?
I'm not the host anymore, so. I think Mr. Healy would have to make me the host. He could do that.
Boy, everybody thought this was so easy.
Well, I'm, I'm, I am good at taking instructions, but there are no, I hit the, I hit the hand item and then.
Do you hover over his name, over John Wood's name, Marty? It might give you more options?
Yeah, it's not.
Or move to panelist?
It's, 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 it is not giving me options at all. Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Wood are both up there.
If you hover over my name, are you able to make me host again?
Assigned co-host. I just assigned you as.
Okay.
Co-host.
Hang on a second.
Maybe you'll have better luck than I do with the hands.
Here comes Mr. Wood.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Yes.
Yes.
I've been having some intermittent Wi-Fi issues tonight, so I apologize if I break up or come up. So as you know, Kathy resigned at the end of this month. After 50 years of service, I think she's deserved it. And. Those are some big shoes to fill. But I also think Mr. Healy's correct. She'll be back. So for tonight's consideration, I respectfully ask the Board of Selectmen to consider. Shrinking the size of the Economic Development Committee to seven members from nine, just due to quorum issues. We're going to be down to six members at the end of the month. So it would be great if we could have the, the, the committee down to seven. Ideally, as I've told you guys all in the past, for future consideration, I'd like to have it stay at nine members with the possibility of. A selectman, a select person from the board being on as well as somebody from planning. Prior to the COVID virus coming around, we started looking at successful towns where they had a successful EDC. And most of them, if not all, had at least somebody from planning, somebody from the Board of Select Person. As well as either an administrator, assistant administrator, some sort of that effect. So I haven't spoke officially with planning yet, so I know I can't have that go for a vote. And I'm not sure. If that has to go before town meeting to change it that much or if it's in the select's charge or not. But I'd like that to be on a future agenda, if possible, to consider having select person as well as somebody from planning on. I initially wanted to have somebody for advisory as well, so we have a more collaborative effort. Throughout the whole process of anything we do. But advisory can only be on one ad hoc committee, not a regular committee. So that's why I didn't ask for that person. So I will ask, do you have any questions for me or our thoughts?
I've got a comment.
All right, go ahead, Sam.
I actually attended a number of the EDC meetings. I think this is a, a good idea. To help them function better, at least in the near term. And as I understand it from the. Bylaw affecting EDC, they're authorized for up to nine members. So the bylaw doesn't say specifically nine. So it seems to me we've got the ability to. Change the number of people we appoint, basically, and thereby change the number of people. I think we could. Appoint a planning board member or a member of this Board of Selectmen. To it, I'm not particularly convinced that that's a good idea for the Board of Selectmen, frankly. And that, you know, I go to a lot of those meetings and so I'm able to. Hear what's going on. Not clear that we need a vote there. I think the real issue is to find a way to have the Board of Selectmen. Create more of what I described as leadership relative to what we think ought to happen downtown and with other EDC activities to help them focus. On things that we collectively think are important. And I think we can transmit that information without having somebody being technically a member. Of the EDC. So I don't necessarily resist it, but I'm not compelled by the, the need for that one myself, at least.
I think, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I think that for me, it would great to be, I'd, I'd rather have you as a, the, that person as that member, as a voting member. Just because that way you have more skin in the game. If you have a vote, you're going to come to more meetings. That's just my personal opinion.
I, I don't know how I can come to.
You can. I don't mean you personally, but I mean, it would be, it would be, you know.
You're fine, certainly, but.
Oh, absolutely. But that's, that's my thought process. I'd rather have it as a voting member personally. To have some skin in the game as well as, as planning as well. But I apologize for interrupting.
Mr. Chairman, I think the one thing to point out, and, and I know that if, if you. You know, listen to the town clerk at town meetings and everything and that, the wording of this bylaw, I think, drives him a little bit batty because it says up to nine members. So I think when it comes to the committee, he's carrying nine spots. And then that becomes an issue in terms of who can vote and who can, you know, I, I agree with, I agree with Mr. Wood. I've sat in on some other EDCs in other communities and they are structured as he, as he says, and, you know, they, they do a nice job. And I think it helps with the collaborative process. I think that if we want to do this, we should do this correctly. And come up with what we think the membership should be and then amend the bylaw at the next town meeting to try to, you know, give it some clarity, which then. You know, will provide you with, you know, provide the clerk with the clarity too, as to what members he's, you know. Actually having appointed and then what a quorum is.
Yeah, John, this is, this is Marty. It sounds like you're worried about, obviously, we're, we're hoping to be able to have a, a special town meeting in the fall. You're worried about. Given. Kathy Bartolini's resignation, whether or not you're going to be able to have meetings if the, the. Identified size of the committee is nine. Is that?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
If I may, Marty?
Yeah, Lisa.
So I, I completely support and I understand the reason for downsizing the committee. And if, if I'm not mistaken, Mark, wasn't this done one other time? This isn't the first time that we've, we've lowered the, the membership on this.
So you did this, you did this previously when it was an ad hoc committee, but you have not addressed it since it's been, become a statutory committee.
Okay, so I completely support that piece of it. I think. I'd like to have more discussion and more consideration. I, I, I agree with Sam on some of the concerns he brought up. I think I, I've attended a lot of the meetings. Sam attends the meetings. I, I think we, as a board, probably. Are very in tuned to what's going on because of the downtown initiative. I worry about having a voting member. Where we have an employee and we have a budget that comes before us as well. So. I, I'm a little concerned about that. I think that there's plenty of people on this board that are more than willing to give input and guidance and, and leadership. And I think. You know, since this is going in the fall, I think, you know, this board has gone in that direction. I think we've been very supportive. Of the downtown initiative and, and how we get there. So I, I don't know that I'm ready to. Vote on changing the structure of the committee at this point. I'd really like to give that more thought.
Do you mean just the committee members or the complete restructuring? Because the restructuring, I didn't even want to, I just wanted to put that out for discussion today. I really want to look at a bunch of other towns and see how they're set up and bring this, like I said, at a future meeting. So I'm not even asking for that tonight. I just want to.
That's fine.
Put my ideal situation out there is to have somebody from planning as well as Board of Selectmen.
Okay. And, and so for the first P. Okay. And so for the first piece, I'm completely supportive, John, of lowering the number so you guys can meet and continue the work that you've been charged to do.
Because, especially with the financial situation, the way it's going to be, we're losing business to Marlborough, we're losing business to Westboro, we're losing business to Framingham. I'd like to try to slow the bleeding down on these vacancy rates. After this pandemic's over, who knows what Route 9 is going to look like? So it would be great to have the tools I need to keep what I can. And everybody I speak with at these different companies, you know, they're very, very nice to talk to, but they want to talk to the movers and the shakers, and that's all of you. So that's, again, that's why I'd like to have that for a future. Again, I haven't even spoke to, put this on planning's agenda, to even see if something they'd be interested in. So that was, I just wanted to put it out there for your consideration for a future meeting.
Thank you, John. And I would support it for a future meeting for the second piece. Absolutely.
Mr. Shea, you're unmuted. Does that mean you want to make some comments?
No, I agree with Ms. Braccio. I agree with the move to reduce the membership tonight, but again, not ready to address changing the structure tonight.
All right. Ms. Malinowski, are you all set?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And, Mark, just to, do you have concern? I will tell you, I took a look at the, I mean, yeah, like everybody else, I mean, I took a look at the, the bylaw and then the 2017 town meeting where it was adopted, and it's, it's the same language out of that. And then, you know, made what is always a, an unfruitful trip to the Attorney General's website to see if there was some, some, some guidance on when you've got language like up to nine members, whether or not the, the executive body, that is, that is us, could by a vote reduce the, the specified number of members of the committee to, for instance, in here, seven. I guess where I, where I come down for purposes of tonight is that the way I interpret the guidance on the Attorney General's website is that if you have a committee with a specified number of members, then you can't reduce the quorum requirement. We don't have that. So I guess two things. Number one, I would be comfortable tonight reducing the specified size of the committee to seven people. And then, the second thing, though, is, is I'm not hopeful that it's going to be any more productive, but, and I'm happy to do it, is to make a phone call to the Attorney General's office. Let them know what are, what, what the vote is that we've taken in terms of the size of a committee, and see if there is a, an issue that they raise. Because, John, I don't want to get you guys in trouble.
I appreciate that.
Does that make sense to folks, that we, we take that step tonight? And then I'll, I'll hopefully in the next day or two, make a phone call to the AG's office and see if I can get some additional clarity. Mark, first of all, since you raised the issue, you raised it two ways. Number one, in terms of the size, we're not going to take any action. It doesn't sound like nobody's got an appetite for taking action on changing the, the specified constitution of the, the committee. But in terms of the number, do you have, do you have a severe reservation with that? If we take that action tonight?
No, I don't think so. It's funny, while you were talking, I did pull up the website. And normally, if you had a committee, say, of nine, the website would show, because right now it shows the seven members, it would show seven members and two vacancies. But right now, it simply shows the seven members, including Ms. Bartolini. So it may be that, and I'd be checking with the clerk's office to understand, you know, how he's carrying this. Is he assuming that it's seven members and two vacancies? It's just not showing on the website? Because in most committees, the vacancies do show when you pull them up.
All right.
So as of the way it's worded, it could simply be that he is just, as long as it's not more than nine, he's just simply putting what's up there.
All right. Then, then I am going to move that, consistent with the letter and intent of the bylaw passed in 2017, that allows a Economic Development Committee in a size up to nine members, that the Board of Selectmen specify that as of June 23rd, 2020, that the specified size of the Economic Development Committee, for purposes of a quorum and otherwise, will be seven members.
Second?
Additional discussion. Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. And John, I will, so that motion passes, and I will let Mr. Purple know and let you know what I hear from the Attorney General's office. I suspect it's not going to be definitive. That's usually not the way they operate, but hopefully it'll be somewhat instructive.
I thought lawyers are always definitive, Marty.
Yeah, we're definitive on both sides of an issue.
So until I hear back from you, should I just assume that I still need seven, I'm sorry, I still need five for quorum?
No.
Oh, thank you.
We voted. We voted. Your, your committee is, is seven people as of today.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
And we'll inform the town clerk of that tomorrow.
And I look forward to any input you guys have for restructuring, how you'd like to see it, or any thoughts, because I think this is the time to have one and get the business on Route 9 that we can. To be totally honest, this is why you have an EDC. I appreciate the tools to make it successful. And I appreciate you doing this tonight. And what I didn't say earlier, thank you for running, and congratulations on your elections, Lisa and Chelsea.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Take care.
Thank you. Have a great night, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Item 7B, discussion of a revised charge for a new golf course committee. Mr. Purple, other than that language, I don't think we've got any proposed charge in our materials. Do you want to just tell us where you, where we find ourselves?
So I think we find ourselves where, I think we hope we'd find ourselves at some point. When the golf course committee was put together, their charge was essentially to help shepherd the golf course from their new, from their old new location to the new location, and to find a way for the course to continue and be productive through the construction of the public, public safety facility, and then also make sure that the renovation work to the, to the holes that were most affected by the, by the move were taken care of. All that's been done. ACABET has done their work. And now, a lot of the committee members that were involved in that effort, I think, feel that they've completed their work and they've kind of moved on. And I believe that, that the second iteration of this committee should be, should be focusing more on the long term and becoming a conduit between the management company and the Board of Selectmen to try to ensure that the needs of the golf course are met, whether they be capital or otherwise, or operational, and, and just to try to, to be that, that connection between the town and the management company. So again, it's focusing a lot less on trying to navigate through a difficult period. It's trying to, you know, look at the course long term and look at the operation long term.
All right. Maybe we can zip through this quickly. I, I, I can't imagine that the concept is not supportive, particularly as I drive by the golf course every day and see just how much use it's getting in, in the months of May and June. I'm assuming that, that, that you, maybe in conjunction with former members of the, of the, the committee, will come up with a new charge to propose to us, and we can consider it at a future meeting? Is that, is that what you've got in mind?
Yeah, I would think that, because you can't assign more than one, if there was a board member who wanted to work with, you know, work with me and maybe John Parent, or work with, you know, work with staff to come up with a draft charge for the new committee, and then bring that back to the board for consideration at a future meeting, I think that's the, that's the direction I'm looking for.
All right. Mr. Stivers, it looked like you had your hand up.
Yeah, I had a comment. I'd actually be willing to volunteer for that unless somebody else really wants to do it. I'd be happy to defer. But I actually attended the golf course committee meetings previously. And it was interesting. I think that this is exactly the right move. I would broaden Mr. Purple's statement a little bit. I think it's more than a conduit. I think it's assistance with marketing the program. We actually, as part of the golf course committee meetings, heard from several external people who ran golf courses. And I was impressed by the range of opportunities that they talked about in terms of things we might do to more aggressively market the course in terms of increased utilization. And it's also impressive that this is largely a fixed cost operation. So if we're doing 10,000 or 15,000 rounds a year now, doesn't cost us that much more money to bump that to 25,000 or 30,000 rounds, and the estimates where the course could withstand substantially greater utilization, a lot of that money goes through the bottom line. So I think that the committee actually talked about the need for marketing input going forward, and I think that's an important dimension to have as part of the charter. Quick sidebar comment, I saw that the financial report recently distributed good news that they seem to be doing well. I think that there is actually more useful information that might be helpful to us. And I would propose to sit down with Mr. Purple and talk about how we might update that financial report to give a little clearer picture in terms of what's going on with the course. Don't want to be burdensome to them from reporting standpoint, but I think there's some interesting numbers that we could be looking at in terms of the golf course's tracking. So anyway, I think great opportunity there. I think, of course, worth strong support from us.
Ms. Malinowski, you're unmuted. Does that mean?
So I would, I would also be happy to help draft something as well. I think, I think there's a lot of, I think, you know, given the situation that we're in, golf courses are very busy right now. So I think it's a great opportunity for residents in town to be utilizing. So I'm just supportive of the idea of having, you know, some oversight moving forward.
Brian and Lisa, are you all set?
I am.
I am as well.
Volunteer Chelsea is the...
I agree.
Yes.
Sam, I'm with you 100%. As the newbie, it's always the way it goes.
You'll learn your lesson soon, Chelsea, to take a step backwards instead of a step forward. But for now, thank you for doing that. And it sounds like there is, I don't think we need a vote. We will just, I will designate you to work with Mr. Purple on this.
All right. Lucky Mr. Purple.
All right. Great. All right. 7C, appoint a Board of Selectmen member to the Metro West Regional Collaborative.
So Marty, I'll jump in here. So I've actually been the board's representative on the Metro West Regional Collaborative for the last couple of years or so, at least two years. In all honesty, before the pandemic hit, there were a number of instances where I had work conflicts and was unable to attend meetings recently. Did attend a number of them when I was first appointed. It's actually a very, very good group. It's representatives from either Board of Selectmen or planning from a number of the towns in the Metro West area. And it's just a good forum for hearing from the Metro West Collaborative itself on initiatives they're undertaking. There's actually a meeting on Thursday of this week where they're going to be discussing mass DOT grant funding opportunities. We'll also be providing project updates on the I-90, I-495 interchange improvement project, and also the I-90 Alston interchange improvement. And while that is in Alston, and there isn't an Alston representative on this, that the proposals that have been put together on that have had an impact on a commuter rail service. So the Metro West communities have an interest in how that project is going to play out to determine what type of impact it may have on commuter rail traffic coming from the Metro West area. Sorry, again, they meet once a, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm, I would right here assert a prerogative. And I know Mr. Stivers is up to his knees or ankles in sewage and water with MWRA stuff and everything like that. Ms. Malinowski, we just, I think this is, this is something that is, that is, that seems right up Ms. Braccio's alley. If she would be with, no?
No, you know what? I'm on, I'm on the master plan, the capital plan.
All right. You just have to say no. That's fine.
Thank you. But I, I think, I was going to suggest, if Brian didn't want to continue to do it, I would fully support Brian to continue. But if he doesn't want to, then, then I think, Marty, you or Sam would be just perfect. I don't know that Chelsea, do you have an interest in this as well?
I would defer to Marty and Sam if there is no...
Hey, Sam, I'll take, I'll take this one.
Thank you. I was gonna...
They said, they said commuter rail. If, if, if I have one bugaboo that, that, that I'd like to bend anyone in state government's ear about, it's commuter rail. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it.
More or less.
Better.
Better.
It's, it is remarkable that Monday was the first day after, what, three months, that they, they put the commuter rail back up to its full service. And the first notice that came across was that the Worcester Line was running late. It's like, they had three months to get the trains ready. Jeez.
Still clearing snow off the tracks, or is that...
All right. So I formally designate myself to, I didn't, I didn't take the advice I gave you, Chelsea. I forgot to take a step backwards.
So I know typically, the planning board also has a representative that attends this, and I believe that they voted last night on who their representative was going to be. I did not see their meeting. I'm not sure who they selected as well. But in the past, it's been Ms. Luttrell for that.
Okay. You know, I am going to, if there's no objection, the next two things we have on the agenda are under seven. Summer schedule for Selectmen meeting and schedule of the annual goal-setting meeting. That's, that's real inside baseball. And so I don't know if there's anybody lurking out there, Vanessa, in the public comment domain, but if, without objection, I'd, I'd like to move item eight up right now, see if there's public comment, and then we can talk about, as I said, the inside baseball for scheduling.
Sure. There is. Mr. Lit does have his hand raised for public comment.
All right.
Bring him over.
Timoth, how are you?
It's Timothy, but I'm, I'm doing okay. Glad to see that you're all here.
How come you don't have a Y at the end of your name, then?
That's a story that's not for the public.
Okay, fair enough. All right. I apologize.
Although it is a story. I just wanted to remind the board that the lack of safe pedestrian access to the public safety building is an open, ongoing issue. It's been open since about September or so. Various boards and committees have taken the position that we ought to do something. The last action I'm aware of was that the Public Safety Building Committee referred it to the Board of Selectmen, and I haven't heard anything since. I'm a bit disappointed. I wanted to remind you that the issue hasn't gone away.
Fair enough. Noted. And I promise it'll be on, if not our next agenda, one of the, one of the upcoming agendas to, to at least get the ball rolling on, on, on addressing the issue.
Great. Thanks.
Maybe it's something that could be part of the sidewalk initiative that Ms. Gallagher is proposing.
I was thinking the same thing. Anyone else, Vanessa?
Nope.
Okay. Then I'm going to close public comment and move on to item... What do folks want to talk about first? The scheduling of the annual goal-setting or the summer schedule generally? It might be better to talk about the goal-setting first, if that makes sense. But I'm indifferent as to which one we talk about first.
I'm flexible on both, so I don't have an opinion.
All right. All right. Well, let's go with goal-setting. When do people want to do it?
Sooner the better.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that, Ms. Malinowski. I'm guessing you, you want to do it sooner rather than later?
Yes.
Yeah? All right. Well, let's see. The only, it strikes me, the only complicating factor for all of this is two weeks from now is the 4th of July. I mean, I honestly, I'd be willing to do it as soon as next week. It's short notice. Mr. Purple, do you have any thoughts on, on whether or not it makes sense to try to pull it together that quickly or to push it off a little bit? I know last year you sent around a spreadsheet to get some, some data and input from us beforehand. What are your thoughts?
Well, I, I think it, just to go back a little further, I think it would have been better to talk about your summer schedule first, so that we could kind of get those dates set. And then you can work around that to decide when you want... so that we could kind of get those dates set. And then you can work around that to decide when you want to do your your retreat. That being said, um, you know, we can, you know, Ms. Mrs. Hale and I would, you know, make ourselves available. Um, you know, pretty much, you know, anytime that, that, you know, that the board wants to set it. If you want to try and get this not, uh, done before the 4th of July holiday, I think that's great. I was hoping that the board would have a, you know, normally when it comes to your summer schedule, we try to schedule one meeting in July, one meeting in August, and space them out kind of proportionately. And those are your business meetings for the month. Doesn't mean we can't put special meetings around them as we need them. For example, I'm hoping that the board will meet on July 7th. We do have some year end issues that we do need to take care of prior to July 15th for some, to close out the year. Um, we have some interdepartmental transfers. I'm working with the finance team on. Advisory then needs to meet and vote on those as well. I'm not sure whether we could coordinate um, a joint meeting or not. But um, other than that date, picking a date in July and picking a date, you know, in August, um, is, you know, would be the other um, for, for us to handle our regular business would be the, the, the normal, the normal schedule for the summer. But I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman, in terms of, I don't have anything that says we couldn't do this next week if you wanted to.
Well, let me, yeah, I'm sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
No, just, just that I guess I shouldn't have said I'm totally flexible. I'm getting ready to go to Michigan, and I won't be back till the 11th of July. So I have spotty internet and a cabin on the beach. So, um, it would be harder for me to try to do something next week because I'm actually preparing to leave. So, um.
All right, why don't we do, why don't we do this then? Why don't we do, Mark, what was the date you said, July 7th?
July 7th would be the, just the date simply to do the one item agenda to handle the interdepartmental transfers.
Okay.
I can make that work.
Okay. So July 7th would be presumably a relatively straightforward meeting. There's usually hopefully not a whole lot of business that builds up between now and then. So the summer, traditionally, nothing traditional about where we find ourselves, traditionally has been quiet. So if we met on the, and you're back on the 11th, after the, the 11th, for the week or so after that, um, do people have issues with their schedule?
None here. Marty, I have a procedural question. Um, is it possible to do a socially distanced in-person meeting versus Zoom?
Well, that was going to be something I was going to raise as well about more generally. And that's one of the reasons, Mark, I put the, uh, the, uh, the issue about meetings. I, I, if, if possible, I would be strongly in favor of trying to pull something like that off.
Outdoors, I think you could.
And have plenty of public, it would be a public meeting for enough space for people to attend.
But the details, it, it doesn't have to, I think trying to do it on July 7th maybe is a little bit aggressive, but maybe our August meeting, again, I, the more we can do to, to you know, move back towards normalcy, I think the better all around. So I, I agree with you, Mr. Stivers.
The 14th of July, aim for a socially distanced goal setting meeting.
So I could do, I could do virtual that week, but not in person. Most likely, I could do the following week in person.
I could do the week of the 21st in December as well.
Yep.
The 20th, yeah, 2021.
So let me, let me jump in here. If I, if we were looking at two dates, one in July and one in August, to simply handle the administrative business of the board, have our regular meeting, so to speak. And the July 7th date was simply to handle the transfers, then I would suggest that, you know, we do July 21st and August 18th as those two dates. Now, if you wanted to, um, attempt to meet, I can't remember who just said who's here, who's not, but you know, you could attempt on the 21st if you wanted to do, you know, um, you know, do that socially distant outside, we could look to facilitate that. You know, I, I can work with the chair to set that up and see what's possible. And, you know, maybe we take the trucks out of, out of Apparatus Bay, you know, one and two, and set up a socially distant meeting there. You know, we can, we can open up the doors. We could take a look at, you know, at a couple of different options.
Mark, did I mishear you? I thought you said you wanted us to meet on July 7th to take care of housekeeping.
Simply for, simply for that one housekeeping item that we need to do before the end of the, you know, as to close out the fiscal year. Um, and we need to give advisory time to then, and to then take the same level of action on any reserve fund transfers and that before the 15th of July. But in terms of regular business meetings, similar to this meeting, to handle our regular business, it would be, you know, I would look at July 21st and August 18th as, as the two dates to, to do that. That would be my suggestion.
Or, or, and that's fine with me. Chelsea, you, you're available on the 14th, just, you wouldn't be available. You'd, you'd be available remotely.
Yes.
So how do other people feel about the 14th?
Works for me, remote.
Remote.
So maybe, Mark, it, because I think there's an appetite for having the goal setting meeting as soon as possible. Um, and one of the reasons I think that doing it sooner rather than later would make sense is because one of the things I want to talk about is some stuff that we started to do the last year. And then, of course, we ran headlong into, into, um, you know, the, the, the COVID change. But particularly with a, with a potential fall meeting percolating, focusing, among other things, on the, um, the EDC's downtown initiative, um, pulling together, you know, really taking the, the initiative that on this and pulling together the planning board and open space and other folks who, who are stakeholders in this process. And I, I think the earlier we have our planning meeting and think about potentially doing that even in August sometime, if, if representatives of some of those boards are available. So, so maybe have the, the quick meeting you're talking about on the.
On the 14th? And then do the planning meeting on the 21st?
Yeah. And, and basically do the, do the quick meeting with, with a regular meeting. In other words, just add that one additional agenda item on, on the 14th. Have a regular meeting as well on the 14th, have a planning meeting on the 24th, 21st, and then pick a date for our August meeting.
So then you would, you would be pushing the transfers to July 14th instead of the 7th?
Yep.
Which is really pushing it one day before we have to have it completed and done, which means advisory is going to have to do it first. Or we try to do a joint meeting on the 14th?
I just think it's, I mean, we can obviously meet on the 7th, but if we can, if we could roll the, uh, you know, that one item into a meeting on the 14th, I guess that'd be my preference. What do, what do other people think?
I'm fine with a 30-minute meeting on the 7th, if that helps the investigative process.
It better not take 30 minutes, but.
Yeah, see, that's the thing. It's gonna be, I, I'm available on the 7th as well. I was just trying to kill two birds with one stone.
I'll, I'll limit my questions and comments.
No, no, no members reports?
Yeah, no. It's up, it's up to you. You tell, you tell me what you want to do, and then, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll make it, you know, we'll make it work. If you do want to do this on the 14th, and you want to do the transfers, and then you want to get into, um, well, wait a minute. Did you want to do the 14th? Or the transfers and then the goal setting? Or no?
21st for the goal setting, I thought you said.
21st for goals, okay.
The transfers and other normal business on the 14th.
Okay.
If you got, I don't want to put you guys in a tough place, Mark, but if you think that that's, that logistically, that doesn't present you guys with, with, you know, real difficulty, that'd be my preference.
Well, my suggestion to you, Mr. Chairman, I, I see Ms. Cook is in the audience, and since you have the chair of advisory, I probably would see if, if, you know, if she wants to come in and at least lay in on whether you want to try and do a joint meeting, you know, on the 14th. Just to try to get that done by both boards in one night.
Sure. Kathy, you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Can you see me?
We cannot.
Good. That's actually a good thing. I didn't expect to do this. Um, we could do it either way. Advisory could meet the week of the, what, 4th, 5th, 6th, the 6th of Monday? We can meet that week, I think. I gotta be careful because advisory is down to five people. So we've got to have all five there. Um, Chelsea is gone and John Rooney has resigned. So we're down to five. So all five have to be there. So.
Want us to change the size of your committee?
Yeah.
Well, actually, we do want to talk about that, just not tonight. For another, for another meeting. But, um, so it's pretty dangerous for me to assume anything as far as the schedule to, I have pulled everyone. But we can try, either way, we can try to meet the Tuesday before, or we can try to do the joint meeting to do the transfers and then, and then advisory do the reserve fund transfers.
All right. Well, why don't we leave it to you, whichever you want to do, and we'll plan to meet on the 14th. And, and if you guys are there as well, we can all say hello. If not, you can take care of business beforehand. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Bye-bye.
See ya.
Okay. So I have, so I think that's all set now then. So July 14th will be your regular meeting for the month of July. We'll do the transfers at that meeting. July 21st will be goal setting. I'll work with the chair to put this into a socially distant outdoor COVID-friendly setting. And then August 18th would be our, our regular meeting for the month of August. Then again, if there's special meetings that needed, we can add those in as needed.
Great. Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
I'm seeing nods all around.
It does.
All right. Mr. Purple, you'll put together a schedule that reflects that?
Yes.
All right. Uh, let's see. I don't have anything else. I have, I have item number nine on my agenda. Mr. Stivers, oh, Mr. Shea, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, um.
Are you gonna add stuff to the agenda?
No, I just wanted to point out, you ran over me again when you left out item B under update on impact of COVID-19, update on operations. This was specifically an item that, that was requested during the discussion of setting the agenda. I think that, that.
I think I, I think I requested that. See, I'm, I see, I get, I, I have, I could change my mind though. No, why don't you give us, what, all right, why don't we end up then with a, with a, with an update on where things stand in the town?
Sure. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to, to, to Mrs. Hale to start. Mr. Davis is not going to be obviously joining us this evening. He would like to come in in July and talk about recreation. There's some big things he's working on. He's not quite ready. But I do have a brief update that I can give on his behalf about some of the things going on with recreation. But I'll, I'll, I'll turn it over to Vanessa first.
Thank you. Um, so I think the two primary things are that, uh, per the governor's current regulations this week, we are allowed to go closer to 50% of our staffing, but always, you know, maintaining social distancing and face masks, et cetera, in the workplace. So we're trying to bring back, you know, more people as we can. Uh, so we're working through that. We are also looking at some part-time nursing help. Our brand new public health nurse, Emily Emiko, um, is working pretty much triple the amount of hours she was hired for in the middle of COVID. So we're trying to get her some temporary help over the course of the summer. We're looking at, are there school nurses that can be helpful, um, someone, um, you know, potentially from a regional board of health? So those are the kinds of things we're working through the logistics of this week, actually. Um, as the governor looks to move toward phase three, Mark and I sit on a call every Tuesday afternoon with the lieutenant governor and her staff. They talked a lot about that today, actually, that, you know, they're looking for two weeks of data in the second half of phase two, which we're in now. So we're anticipating perhaps the week after July 4th that we might be in phase three. And at that point, we certainly would hope to be back open to the public. We're doing business by appointment whenever someone needs it right now. So, you know, that piece is going well. We meet folks outside, so they're not coming into the building. The other part of when we do reopen our buildings is contract tracing. So every department, every building will have a log of any visitors to the building in case someone is, unfortunately, diagnosed with, with a positive case. So it's a lot of logistics going on right now. But as I said, hopefully by mid-July at the latest, we'll, we'll, fingers crossed, be open to the public. Part of phase three means also larger gatherings, which we expect to hear more from the governor in the next 10 days or so. So that definitely relates to the library, to recreation, not so much the senior center. They're going to focus during one of these conversations on senior center operations within the next few weeks. But we expect that will be the very last. Uh, in fact, Mark and I chatted about the senior center today. Even when the employees are all back to full staff, the building needs to be open to the public. It shouldn't be closed. But, you know, there will be strict barriers. So no one is going into the pool room or the kitchen, um, just to maintain the cleanliness of the building as much as possible. I also wanted to mention that curbside pickup at the library started last week. That's gone extremely well. I believe Ryan is filling 50 to 60, um, reserve orders a day. So that's gone really, really well. So we're very happy that the public can at least, you know, get things from the library or return items to, to keep them busy. The summer reading is going on, even though there is nobody in the library building. They have all kinds of activities that are available for pickup as well in their curbside delivery for summer readings. We just wanted to give a plug for that, too. I think that covers it for now, unless you have anything else, Mark.
Yeah, no, just a couple of things. I will say with the library, if you do drive by at the right time and look at the table they've got set up in the parking lot, it looks like a bunch of bag lunches, you know, with all these little individual bags on the table. So they, they are doing a brisk, a brisk business. I also do want to give kudos to John Parent and his staff. That, uh, you know, with all the work they've done to prepare the buildings, to have the employees coming back in, as Vanessa said, you know, we're, we're ramping up our staff. We are allowing people to stagger schedules so that we don't have too many people in one office at any given time without proper separation. The good news is we don't have big staffs in most of these offices, so it's not that hard. But it does make sense for some people to still remain remote. And, you know, we are doing that. But again, kudos to John and his staff for getting things prepared. It's going to be a nice transition when the public is allowed to come back in. So, um, the, um, with regards to recreation, you may have seen when you went down to town meeting, the work that's happening in De Petri Field. It's in its final stages. The irrigation is being connected. They've hit a bit of a snag in trying to find the water line to connect into. And hopefully that is all going to be resolved by the end of this week. They're putting in the heads, then they'll be putting in the rest of the material on the field and laying the sod. This is all supposed to be done and wrapped up by July 3rd. It's a little bit exciting just to see that all set. I really appreciate the school making accommodations because it's been a little difficult to get into Neri. You know, they have to come around, you know, they can't come in from, from Parkerville. So it's, it's been a little bit of an inconvenience, but I think the finished product will, will match that. For Mooney and Neri Lights, Rec Department is informed planning. They're going to be submitting the package for those projects on the July submittal date. It's tentatively placed on the August 10th public hearing for planning. And once it's approved, it's going to be about 11 or 12 weeks for procurement, product manufacturing and installation. In a perfect world, if everything goes right and COVID cooperates, you know, we could be looking at having some fall ball under the lights at those locations. So, uh, you know, fingers crossed. Playgrounds are now open. Um, they've got proper signage, encouraging face covering, social distancing, hygiene. DPW has been helping out by trying to power wash them as often as possible to keep them clean. The only playground that is still closed is the Rec Center, the Art Center, due to new surfacing being installed. That should be done by the end of the week, and then that playground will be open as well. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about, about youth baseball. Um, youth, uh, Southboro Little League is, is in season officially starting this past Monday on, um, June 15th. During the phase, this phase, they're operating at a skills and drills level. And they've got about 109 players registered for the summer season, which is, which is really good. They've worked very well with Rec to try to meet all the requirements that they need to do in order to come back. And hopefully full practices, scrimmages, games begin in phase three. Right now, as Vanessa had noted, you know, we're looking at July 6th for phase three. And, and if everything continues to trend in that direction, hopefully they'll be getting back to games at that, um, at that date. I just do want to note as a final thing that there's been great coordination between Fay and St. Mark's and the Rec Department to make sure that when they're working on what's closed and what's open, they're trying to make uniform decisions so that it doesn't look like, well, Fay's got, you know, Fay's got teams out on the fields and they're doing this, but we. Fay's got teams out on the fields and they're doing this, but we can't, we can only scrimmage at this point of skills and drills. And so they're trying to make sure that it's all done very coordinated. And so I appreciate the collaboration that Fay and St. Mark's have with recreation on that. So as I said, Tim Davis will be at your next meeting, can give you a little more updates on outdoor movies, concerts, summer nights. And there's some camp and general rec programming that they're working on, putting the finishing pieces together that he'd really like to talk about, you know, positive stuff instead of closings and things you can't do. Let's talk about the things we can do.
All right, well, Mr. Purple, thank you for catching that. The me who wanted to put it on the agenda was right. The me who skipped over it was wrong. So that's terrific information for us, and more importantly, for everybody in Southboro to know. And I've been impressed with the way you and the Recreation Department and all the folks in town government have handled this whole thing. So kudos across the board.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Shea has made a, well, motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Mr. Shea's disappearing. Second.
All right, discussion very quickly is, again, I just want to thank folks just off of tonight. I think there's terrific energy on the board, and I'm looking forward to a terrific year for us and for the town. So with that as my only discussion, Ms. Braccio.
Aye.
Mrs. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shea.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. We are adjourned. See folks in a few weeks.
Good night.
Take care.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.